Local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
We want to say whenever we come before you is how grateful we are for the blessings that you have afforded to us as Americans, as just people that you spent the life of your son for, the freedoms that we get to enjoy because of those who've come before us and because of all that has been given on our behalf. Oh God, we are so grateful. We thank you that tonight we can gather with our supervisors and important decisions can be made that affect all of us as a community. Oh God, would you grant wisdom to these supervisors? Lord, you know them, you know their families, and you know the decisions that lay before them. Lord, so many times we have only relied upon our own wits, only relied upon what we were looking at, and we regret many of the decisions that we have made when we haven't looked with eyes of faith, when we haven't depended on you and your wisdom and your guidance. So that's why we're asking tonight that by your Holy Spirit, you would give our leaders wisdom, Lord, because they weren't just chosen by our community, they were chosen by you. So let your hand rest on each one of them as decisions are made, and we thank you in advance for the blessings in our community as we walk in your ways, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Jennifer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, I'd like to thank you for coming today. It's nice to see you. I was expecting your father. We have one presentation.
If you've seen me, you've seen the father. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist the joke, the Bible joke, but thank you for having me. God bless you all.
Thank you for coming.
Jennifer Montgomery, Senior Probation Officer, please join the board to receive a gold resolution in honor of your retirement and over 26 years of service to Sutter County.
The Sutter County Board of Supervisors takes this opportunity to present Jennifer Montgomery with a gold resolution in recognition of her over 20 years of dedicated service to citizens of Sutter County, in recognition of her retirement from the county on July 15th, 2024, and Jennifer Montgomery hired by Sutter County Probation Department on February 14th, 1998 as Deputy Probation Officer. Jennifer was promoted to Deputy Probation Officer II on July 3rd, 1999, and promoted to Senior Probation Officer July 26th, 2003. And Jennifer Montgomery devoted the last 11 years of her career working with the adult population in recovery court, helping individuals with service substance abuse issues, overcoming their addiction and antisocial tendencies, guiding them to become productive members of our community. Jennifer Montgomery has attended and provided security for a variety of community events such as UBS Sutter Fair, the National Night Out, national school events such as proms, football games, graduations, and assisted with the facilitation of parent project. The county, Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers this congratulations and severe appreciation to Jennifer Montgomery upon occasion of her retirement, and causes the name of each member of the effect's gold resolution be evidence of the board's individual and collective appreciation for over 26 years of dedicated service, the Board of Supervisors, Sutter County, and its citizens. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you all who took time out of your guys' very busy schedules to come all the way down here. I truly appreciate it, and Chief Rittner, thank you, and I want to thank the chiefs before me who believed in me, supervisors who guided me and tolerated me, and of course, all my wonderful coworkers that I got to be with, and probably most importantly, my family, my daughter's here for all those late nights and early mornings and missed events. I truly appreciate it, and I feel like they served as well.
Thank you. Yeah, everybody come on down.
I do not do that. You understand I have to listen to her.
Go workers, guys, come on down. Come on. Thank you for all you guys' hard work keeping our public safe. Thank you. Members of the public are allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter and jurisdiction. Of the Board of Supervisors, state law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on items not appearing on opposed to agenda. Consent items 1 through 21, a consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial. Oh, wait a minute, did we have any?
We do, Chair. We have two public comments.
Okay, let's do the public comments. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Two public comments.
The first speaker is Tina Hessong.
Sorry about that, guys.
It's such an exciting day today. New California State has a contender of delegates in Washington DC as we speak to advocate for our statehood. Recently, the Sutter County Clerk Recorder, ROV Donna Johnson, stated in an email to me that the reason 1,237 votes for Prop 1 were unaccounted for was because the voters did not cast a yes or no vote for the statewide election. Apparently, Sutter County voters did not want to be bothered by meaningless pesky statewide election. Did 1,237 voters blow off the Prop 1 election and not care about the outcome? That is not consistent with other statewide proposition elections. In 2016, California Secretary of State Alex Padilla certified that 14,181,595 total votes were cast for the presidential election. He also certified that 14,610,509 votes for Prop 57. Interesting. Let's get out our calculators. The anomaly with Secretary of State Padilla's own certifications is that the statewide Prop 57 election had 428,914 more votes than the presidential election. According to Padilla, voters were not concerned at all about who the next president would be. The voters simply ignored the presidential election and made sure to cast their yes/no vote for Prop 57. To accomplish this on the ballot, they had to pass the presidential election and skip all the way down to the Prop 57. Alex Padilla certified he owns it. The Secretary of State is the highest ranking election official in the state, and Padilla's certification clearly indicates some California voters were more concerned with a proposition election than the presidential election. That is the complete opposite of the explanation provided by the Sutter County Clerk. Transparency is the only way to truly find out what happened to the 1,237 Sutter County Prop 1 votes. I am asking for a hand count of all the ballots that were cast throughout the county. We have a staff of volunteers ready and willing to help with the process. They will separate the ballots into three piles, yes, no, and the blank pile, which will not have any yes or no marked in the section if the Sutter County voters did, as the clerk claims, and left it blank. What could possibly go wrong? Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, South UC, South River County, Walton area, Happy Park. Good job, Karen Baines, thank you for your car, Baines. Nicholas Mitchell, right? McKelly. The guy likes his, no way, his collections. I like his collection too. Matt Conan, the farmer, there's him, the Star Wars guy over there, Darth Vader, Dan Flores. There's Professor Steve, Professor Steve, also of course, County Council. You better call Saul, Saul, lawyer. Better call Saul. Exactly Hamble, the guy who worked with FEMA, oh yes, National Guard and everything. We need more civil defense in the Ukraine war. And the greatest sheriff of all times, Brandon Barnes, and the Marine Corps guy, ooh wah, ooh wah, the Marines. And of course, Neil, the worst guy, and Jamie, and the lawyer. There's Sarah, every US man, that's the health director, and there is, there is a probation chief, probation chief at the US Marshal Lady from Sacramento, Navy Service.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, moving on. Consent calendar items 1 through 21, consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or which prior policy direction have been given to staff that only require routine action of the board. The Chair will advise the audience that the matter be adopted by one total motion. However, the board may its option or upon the request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. Do we have any speaker cards? No. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board, 1 through 21?
Through the Chair. I'll make a motion to approve.
Nick?
Second the motion.
Dan? Okay. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelly?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Okay, moving on to 22. We have a public hearing.
Public hearing to consider approval of the fiscal year 2024/25 roadwork plan in the amount of $13,503,002 for proposed expenditures for county road purposes, adoption of a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the county's allocated share of the road maintenance and rehabilitation account funds created by Senate Bill 1, estimated at $8,883,320 to fund the roadwork plan.
Neil?
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. So yes, this is an annual presentation before your board to talk about the planned roadwork of funds ranging from the gas tax dollars that we receive that are approximately around $3 million and then about $4.4 million in the SP1 funds. With your staff report, as was mentioned in reference, there is a resolution that essentially is sent to the state as to how we will spend the allocation of the SP1 funds. The attachments that I may ask staff to scroll through. So on the, on the board, the exhibit and stuff that we have, we typically try to break it down, list the various bridges that we're working on, a variety of the road projects that we're working on, and so maybe for the bridges, I'll just highlight a few things. We have a number of federal aid bridges that unfortunately have all been kind of stalled in environmental permitting and in right-of-way determinations. So we are continuing to work through our consultants, both environmental and engineering consultants, in order to resolve those situations. Just to give you a highlight, we have a couple bridges, Larkin and Nicholas Avenue, they were ready for construction in 2021, and we applied for the construction funds. Due to COVID, the Caltrans staff wasn't available to process our funding requests, so the environmental permits that we had expired. So now we have to go back through the process and have new environmental permits issued, and so that's, you know, essentially included in that. It's a, it is a federally reimbursable activity, but unfortunately it causes delay. In this year's road funding request and plan, we are showing that we expect to be able to begin construction work on the Mark Hopkins Culvert. This year, it'll probably be in the spring. There's essentially one final permit that's expected to come through. We're continuing to work with our consultant on the Standard Rose Bridge at Larkin. That project is fully designed, and we're just waiting on the environmental permits for that project as well, both state and federal. So we have tried to expedite those projects, and they're, like I say, listed in the plan. We have included a number of road safety improvements at a couple of our schools, so at Berry Road School and then at Central Avenue out in the vicinity of Meridian. Those are both areas where we're going to provide some additional signage and some crosswalks. We are working in conjunction on Keys Road. It's a railroad crossing, and it's a kind of non-signalized railroad crossing down in District 5. We are receiving funding through the PUC. So we, you know, receive a variety of funding sources, and essentially the spreadsheet in the table is our way to try to capture all of that. We're going to, we lifted the culverts that we still have to replace, and we had been working with the, so one, initially the culverts failed during the winter of '23. We've been working through FEMA in order to be reimbursed for when we do the replacements. They required us to get state and federal environmental permits. We just had a call with the State Department of Fish and Wildlife last week. We're awaiting official letter, but they've determined that they're not emergency repairs because it's taken us so long to get the permits, so now they won't issue us a permit. So we're going to have to go back through a more lengthy permit process in order to do those replacements. We think we'll then complete them this year, probably in the spring, but it is kind of just, there are some ongoing challenges in order to try to complete some of the projects. We do include work for doing more overlay improvements and bull shouldering. That's been a concern of, I think, of your board and of our department, so we're lifting over 10 miles of shouldering improvements, and we may try to even do more throughout the year. If there are amendments that we make to this plan, obviously we'll bring them before your board. If we receive some other funding, we have some grant applications out there we're waiting. But with this, like I said, it's a little bit more than $13 million, and the majority of it is some outside funding that we receive through the SP1 and the gas tax. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we're going to open a public hearing first. Open a public hearing. Is there any speaker cards? Does any member of the public list to address this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, no questions for Neil from the board?
Just one quick one, Mr. Chairman. Neil, you mentioned the environmental permits, and you gave us an excuse on what happened there for sure with the Caltrans holdup. So what's the right-of-way delay? Like, what is, what can you explain a little bit?
So the right-of-way is that most of the bridges have water company access roads adjacent to them, and so those water companies have to provide, we have to provide continued access to them as we essentially widen and lengthen bridges, and so they have to be compensated for the right-of-way that we are going to impact. And so there's a negotiation that takes place, and there's a process due to it being federal aid, so we have a consultant that's dealing specifically with the water companies. We expect some of those to get concluded probably between now and the end of this year, and then we can move to the construction phase.
Great. Thank you, Neil, and I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
So Neil, on these culvert replacements, how much longer is this going to take?
So the latest information is it will take another 120 days at best to get the permit from the Fish and Wildlife. When I receive the denial letter, I'll provide a staff report and provide it through your board, but essentially what happens is we have to get what's called a stream bed alteration agreement. It's a more detailed and a more lengthy process, and we, you know, thought we were following all the steps that we needed to classify the bridges or the failed culverts as emergencies, but the state doesn't see it that way, even when we explained our dependence on the reimbursable federal funding. But, so now what there is, there's a process where we submit certain applications, and ideally, we would get the permits in about 120 days. We'll just call that the first part of November. So then what they would expect is that then we would do the replacements during the winter season, the wet season when it's raining. So we're then required to have a biologist on site when we do that work so that we don't impact certain species. And then additionally, if there's a forecast of rain within 72 hours, we're not allowed to have a contractor do work. So it can be very inconsistent. So we'll take all that into account as to when's the most efficient time to actually do the work, you know, what could be cost-effective, but we will get the permits.
Okay, I think things be dragging on forever. FEMA's slow tracking. Anyway, all right, moving on, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor McKelly?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Okay, next item is appearance item is Patrick Blacklock, will, Blacklock will RCRC President and CEO, will have a presentation for the board. The mic.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me here today, and I'm going to provide an overview of RCRC and some of our affiliate entities and what our initiatives are there, but one of the things I want to say right at the start is to invite you to ask me questions along the way or provide feedback, and part of the reason for that is it's really valuable for me to hear directly what's on your mind, take notes, and carry that back to the staff team back at RCRC. So please don't hesitate to stop me anywhere along the way that you want. As mentioned, my name is Pat Blacklock. I've been the RCRC CEO now for a little over three years. Prior to that, I was a county administrator just south of here in Yolo County for about 11 years, so come with a deep background in county land before coming to RCRC. And part of what attracted me to RCRC is the entrepreneurial side that we'll talk a little bit about in a minute. But RCRC itself is a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation made up of 40 California counties, including Sutter County, and governed by a county supervisor from each of those counties. And then you can see along the bottom in this slide, the affiliate entities that I'll talk about in a second. I'm here to give you a sense of our strategic plan and the initiatives we have underway. Hopefully, some of these categories aren't a surprise to you to see that we're focused on broadband and housing. You were talking about, or hearing comments about regulatory agencies and permitting, that's a big area of focus for us. And then forced resiliency, infrastructure and economic development there. We're helping primarily small counties obtain grants where they may not have the resources to do it on their own. But on the right, you can see the vision that the board set for us, which is to be your advocate both in Sacramento and DC, but then also your innovative service provider. Really, that's meant to be the entrepreneurial arm. When there is a challenge too big for a small county to address on their own, they come to us to see if through the power of 40 counties, we can achieve economies of scale and address it. And so we've spun up a number of public agencies and nonprofits over the years to do just that. But advocacy remains our cornerstone, and here you can see a number of the topics that we're engaged on. Again, hopefully none of these are a surprise to you. One on the bottom there on the left that I would mention is the California Public Utilities Commission. We've become very astute at advocating there. It's a very Byzantine process in order to qualify to advocate there and participate in the proceedings. We're now participating in a number of proceedings ranging from utility regulation to broadband infrastructure to carrier of last resort, the AT&amp;T request to remove landlines, and so very active there. And then on the right, you can see our ad hoc committees, and that's how our board updates our policy. And the areas they're focused on this year is a Williamson Act, Williamson Act ad hoc committee to focus on the fact that the state hasn't provided subvention funding since. funding in now quite some time. And so they're looking at the program. How can the program be updated and how can we ensure that it gets funded in the future? And then secondly, again, with the topic you just heard, Road Infrastructure Ad Hoc Committee. And that's really looking at the challenge of road maintenance funding and particularly as gas tax revenues decline, what are the options and really to update our policy to make sure rural counties aren't left behind as a primarily urban legislature looks at legislation on that front in the future. Switching from advocacy, Golden State Finance Authority is one of our public agencies, a joint powers agency made up of the same 40 counties. And it's historically been focused on providing financing instruments for rural counties. But one area of focus is providing down payment assistance. Long ago, the board recognized that homeownership is a key determinant of wealth. And for rural communities, if we can provide assistance for community members to gain homeownership, that translates into greater community vitality and strengthening. And you can see that 500, over 500 individuals or families in Sutter County have received down payment assistance through GSFA. We do that on a national level through National Home Buyers Fund and there's 40 individuals there through Sutter County. That's primarily because they work with different lenders. But the program I want to focus on briefly is the Assist to Own Program. About now two years ago, our board felt that we needed to do more to help rural counties with employee recruitment and retention, county employee recruitment and retention. So they developed a program specific for county employees. And if you're a Sutter County employee, you can get down payment assistance up to three and a half percent at no cost whatsoever. And so what that means is if you're buying a home, you can get three and a half percent down payment assistance that doesn't cost anything for 30 years, basically. And then at that point, you would need to refinance or, or pay it off. But no interest accrues and there's no payments due. So it's a non amortizing second that sits on there just to provide down payment assistance to someone. And if they sell it, prior to that, they would just pay the capital. Again, no amortization, no interest amortizes during the life of the loan. So we've seen about 100 county employees throughout our member counties use the program since it was initiated. And you've had someone in Sutter County use it as well, a county employee. So we're trying to get the word out. Again, it was a program that GSFA invested in to help with recruitment and retention. Golden State Connect Authority is our newest public agency. It's a joint powers agency, again formed by the same 40 counties, including Sutter. And really its entire purpose is to bring high speed internet to communities where it doesn't presently exist. And so we developed it, started it about two and a half years ago with a budget of zero. Within a year, it had a budget of 19 million, having sourced California Public Utilities Commission grants to provide broadband engineering, including in Sutter County. And we presently have 1.2 billion in financing pending with the CPUC to do actual construction of a high speed internet network, fiber network. We've received our first two grants in Imperial and Alpine Counties to actually construct and operate what would be a publicly owned open access network. What that means is that any ISP can use the network to provide service to the home, but the public agency does the heavy lift, in this case, Golden State Connect Authority, of actually putting the fiber in the ground to the home. And the idea is to have it reach those communities wouldn't otherwise reach, but to also open it up. So there's multiple providers providing service. So you as a consumer have multiple options. And Sutter County does have an application pending through the California Public Utilities Commission right now for one of those potential projects. Golden State Natural Resources is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit we developed several years ago to focus on forest resilience. And whether you're a mountain county where the catastrophic wildfire forest fires are occurring, or a valley county where you're experiencing the impacts of those forest fires in the, in the context of wildfire emissions, the impacts are throughout California. So again, our counties came to us and said, the state has set a goal to advance the pace and scale of forest health projects, 1 million acres a year, but they're nowhere close to meeting it. How can we help as counties? And thus, Golden State Natural Resources was born. And our focus is really twofold. One is to help the Forest Service, which is the primary landowner, advance the pace and scale of projects. And we have a pilot project right now with the Forest Service where we're acting as the pilot, as the project manager, and we're completing the environmental review for the project so that we can get it permitted and get it across the finish line. One of the challenges the Forest Service has is super high vacancy rates, a lot of staff turnover. And so it is a challenge for them to complete their projects entirely in-house, thus their contract with us to help with them on that front. But even if we're successful in getting those projects permitted, there isn't an outlet for the low diameter biomass. So think of a big tree, can go to a mill, be turned into lumber, but the tops, the branches, they get piled and placed in the forest and burned at present. And so there's, the Forest Service, among other agencies, looking for a more sustainable outlet. And we've done quite a bit of research on that internationally and have identified that there is a market for what's called pellet stock, industrial pellets. They're used as a replacement for coal, primarily in Japan and in the UK presently. But there are domestic markets opening up as well. And if we had plants up and running today, the project would be in the black and able to reinvest those monies to complete more forest health projects. So we are on the cusp of completing an environmental impact report for two plants, one in Lassen County and one in Tuolumne County, along with the forest health projects within about 100 mile working radius of those two sites, and then transporting the pellets from those two sites to the port of Stockton to be used overseas as a replacement for coal. We hope that EIR will be out in the next six weeks. And then ultimately we'll go to the Golden State Finance Authority Board for certification. And we're processing entitlement applications currently in Tuolumne and Lassen Counties. So we're hopeful that 2020, the rest of this year and next year will be a big year for that particular project. And then two more I'll quickly mention. One is Environmental Services Joint Powers Agency. This is another public agency focused on helping primarily small counties with regulatory compliance with waste management activities. So they meet quarterly, they meet with Cal Recycle, they meet with the permitting agencies to, one, hopefully help them navigate the creation of regulations in a way that isn't overly burdensome. But secondly, to provide technical support and assistance to those counties in compliance. And then lastly, another 501(c)(3) is the Rural Advancement Institute. We brought this back to life a couple of years ago to focus on two things. One is education. Again, I mentioned earlier that we have a primarily urban legislature. So the goal of RAI is to get those urban legislators out to rural communities, to familiarize them with rural community needs and interests so that when they're policymaking, they have a little bit more of that background. And then secondly is to conduct research on topics of interest to rural communities. And the topic for this year is, I think, will be of one of interest to Sutter County. It is the issue of small fire districts and EMS entities with response in an era where number of volunteers declining, call volumes are increasing, and the sustainability of our fire districts and fire agencies in that sort of climate. And to develop a statewide research. So we have some data with which to inform the policy discussions that are happening at the legislature. So that we're right now in the process of working with the university to hopefully get that project underway and completed. That's a very quick summary of everything that we're up to at RCRSC. I want to thank Supervisor Conant for being an active participant at RCRSC board meetings. One of the things that we do is invite in the cabinet secretaries. We've had the Cal EPA secretary there. And now at their next meeting next month, we'll have the federal EPA regional administrator there. And Supervisor Conant always does a great job of providing examples of some of the challenges you're facing here in Sutter County for those cabinet secretaries and leaders to consider. So I want to thank you for your active participation. And with that, I'll stop and happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback from you.
Any questions for Patrick?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Yeah, quick question. In the beginning, you talked a little bit about helping us to secure some grants. Is that limited in scope or is it possible that we could get grants or you could help us with grants for levy repair? Or have you ever done that before, or design or engineering?
The short answer, anything is possible. We haven't done levy repair specific grant applications. We have done some water related grant applications. And so the short answer is let's have you connect you with our economic development team to get a better sense of what your interests are. And they're always looking for those grant opportunities. Our goal really is particularly again for the smaller counties, is we recognize you don't have the resources to be chasing all these grants that are out there. We're trying to reach up and grab them before they fly by the smaller counties and go straight to a big urban.
Well, you just hit on the point. And part of our problem is Subufka, you know, we were hoping that we may be able to get some funding from the federal government for a slurry wall in this infrastructure package of Biden's. But it turns out, if you don't have a shovel ready project, you can't apply for that funding. So now we're left with our, an option of trying to cobble together several different grants if we can. And so that's why I'm asking the question is maybe this could be an area we could pursue and, and just get a few things together and possibly come up with the funding for it. So.
Other opportunity there is our federal advocates are always happy to help in terms of congressionally directed spending and figuring out a way to potentially make an ask on that front. And so if the county has an interest in that, we're happy to help on that front, too.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick note for clarification for Nick's comment there. Patrick, may not be aware of, Sutter County, 68% of the landmass of the county is in a Viva flood plain. Eleven percent of Butkus, that means that's 79% of the county we can't build and we can't develop. That's stifling our local economy. And it makes it difficult to build agricultural facilities on those properties as well. So any help we could get on this, getting some kind of grants for these projects would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Happy to work with Stephen to have some follow up conversation and see what we can do.
And then the last question I had, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. You finish yours. I do have one question.
Okay, I've always been impressed with Golden State Finance Authority. And you did a great job on the overview. Could you just mention to the board and the community, how many dollars gold make up Golden Finance Authority?
Over the years, I mean, it's over a billion in financing that's been done. I think the number that's probably most relevant was, if I remember it off, how many was over 500 families that have been helped in Sutter County through down payment assistance? I can't remember off the top.
I think that's about right.
So I just had one follow up question for that. And that is, what's the best way for citizens and employees to access Golden State Finance for that?
Absolutely. One thing that we always offer is if you have a local Realtors Association, we're happy to come, provide a presentation on it. Because not only do we have the program for county employees, but we have programs for other community members as well, hospital staff, nursing staff, et cetera, that we can provide information about. So typically someone finds out about it from their Realtor or their lender. And one of the best ways to increase familiarity is for us to join you or attend a Realtors Association meeting and provide that info. Secondly, we're happy to do, if your HR wants to do a webinar or wants to put out a publication, we're happy to do that. And we've done that for a number of counties. And I know Tulare, for example, I think they've had over a dozen county employees use the program. And it's probably because we did specific work with their HR department to get the word out. And I think at first people aren't familiar with Golden State Finance Authority. And then the second they're like, well, no cost. Can that really be? Well, it's a public agency. It is no cost. And the entire reason is to help with recruitment and retention. Great, thank you.
Yeah, so through the chair, I just ask for somebody to reach out to the Sutter Realtors Association and make sure we make that connection. And also ask HR to, to have that webinar that you, that you offered. Thank you again for your presentation. Thank you for all that you do at RCRSC.
Thank you. Happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you again, Patrick, for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. No action, no action required for this item. Number 24, Zachary Hamill, Emergency Operations Manager will present a presentation.
Zachary.
Zachary.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. I'm Zachary Hamill, Emergency Operations Manager for Sutter County. Before you is a recommendation to ratify a proclamation of a local emergency due to extreme severe fire weather conditions and extreme heat as of last week and this week. The proclamation that we're asking you to ratify is for when conditions of disaster and extreme peril threaten the safety and the persons and properties of Sutter County. This provides authority to take preventative and preparatory actions to protect public health. I'll get it out, I promise. Proclaim an emergency, proclaiming an emergency allows the county to activate emergency plans, mobilize resources and coordinate with state and federal agencies in advance of any adverse impacts. And it provides a legal framework for expedited decision making and implementation of emergency measures. So last week, we had a major to extreme heat risk. The heat risk helps us make informed decisions on how to best prepare our community due to that hazard. The heat risk specifically is a National Weather Service product, and it incorporates three components. How unusual the heat is for that time of year, the duration of the heat, including both daytime and nighttime temperatures, and if those temperatures pose an elevated risk to heat related impacts based on data from the CDC. So based on our major to extreme heat risk, we partnered with HHS and the library. And we opened up a cooling center. That cooling center was open Tuesday, July 2nd through Sunday, July 7th. And 75 people in our community utilized those services. Our highest official recording of temperature was 112 degrees on July 6th, with an average over the week of 109.5 degrees. During that same time, we had the Thompson Fire light off in Oroville in Butkus County. And we sent sheriff's deputies, fire resources and a PIO to support Butkus County. Looking forward with your ratification, the Climate Prediction Center has a July outlook that is 50 to 60% chance of above normal temperatures, which we're seeing right now. That 10 to 20 degrees higher than our average for this time of year. Tomorrow, July 10th through Friday, July 12th, we have a new excessive heat warning with a major heat risk. The hottest days being Thursday and Friday at 109 degrees. And we are additionally planning another cooling center for those three days. This time, instead of at the library, it's going to be at the vet's hall in the Tucker Room due to some conflicting spaces. The last point I want to make is National Weather Service did say that there will be a notable cooling trend this weekend, dropping into the high 90s as that Delta breeze influence starts and coming back up into the Delta and impacting Sutter County. Any questions?
Any question for Zach?
Through the chair. Move approval.
If there's any speaker, speaker cards, right? Okay. No, I'm a Republican. Nope. Okay. All right. We have a motion by Dan and second by Carm. Rule of.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Thank you, Zach.
Zach, while you're there, real quick, sorry, through the chair. So, I'm sorry, did our ag commissioner is not here? Was there any way you could coordinate with her? Because I don't think this declaration, the helps in the ag industry to, is that a separate declaration that has to come from the ag commissioner?
I'll, I'll reach out and discuss with her.
If you can, please.
Thanks. As part of that, she has to make a determination of how much, how much of a percentage of crops have been impacted. But yeah, we can absolutely work with our ag commissioner on that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carm. All right, Steve.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. I wanted to thank all of the staff who worked on the cooling centers from Zach and, and his crew. A lot of HHS, Health and Human Services folks and the library, of course, made it all very successful and smooth running. Glad we were able to help out a decent amount of people. So the Thompson Fire in Oroville is 100% contained. Butkus County deactivated their EOC, I think, yesterday. So just wanted to mention that. The grand jury released their report. There was an article in the paper about that. And then, of course, the various offices and staff will respond to that timely. There were five subject matter areas in this report, one being the jail and some needed improvements, some ADA improvements at a building on Second Street, Juvenile Hall, construction project, the Board of Supervisors salaries, where they recommended an increase, and a review of the past election where no fraud or any issues were found. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. We have a board item, very vacancies that are in our board packet for everybody. And the next item is, we'll go into the board's considerations and board reports. This report. Mike, Nick, Carm.
So just going back to the excessive heat, the comment that was made by Zach, sorry, that, so a lot of these commodities that we're talking about, their impact, it won't be harvested until a later date. But since we have the data and all that right now, knowing what the temperatures were, they can start building their case. The peach harvest has already started in the community and we've seen it in sizing issues, mixed maturity and that, and just poor quality because of the excessive heat. On the prunes, you've seen dieback on the trees and actual shrivel and they've already dropping. But walnuts will come off till October. So, you know, who knows what's happening inside that, that shell right now. But thank you for your consideration. I have a question that I've been doing some traveling and have come across these, the communities that really support the food trucks and, and that. And, you know, that just was, want to run this by staff and see if there'd be some kind of consideration to use a Kmart parking lot as a possible area to rent, making sure that these people are, you know, have the proper permission, certification through public health and all that, and maybe pay a fee and stuff. But, but to put that vacant lot to, to some kind of use. And going on to a couple of requests that I have here. And going on to a couple of requests that I have here, request a letter to be sent to Congressman Gera Mendy, wishing him a speedy recovery. I'd like to close in memory and send a letter of condolence and sympathies to the families of Shirley Shiber Gabhart and Romi Shahi. And then sorry, also I'd like to have staff reach out to Eric Guerra, our CARB representative from this area. He did request some letters of support for biomass and see if somebody could follow up with their office. Thank you.
Thank you, Carm. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like my name added to Mrs. Gabhart's letter, please. There's a lot happening. You can come cool off on Plumas Street in the heart of, the heart of Sutter County since it's so hot, but we've got hooligans, a great place to hang out. If you haven't been there, you need to go check it out. The restaurant's great, the food's good and the, and there's plenty of beer that will cool you down. City Cafe is having a ribbon cutting tomorrow night, actually, so hope all of you can join us or anyone who'd like to, please come at 5:30. They've also introduced a new side of their restaurant where it's, I don't know, it's called a beer bar, I guess, I don't know, but several types of beers. Sounds like that's the theme of the night, but you know, that's pretty interesting and you should come check it out. So I just, I just want to encourage people to come check out the heart of Sutter County and I also want to tell Mr. Baines or Supervisor Baines that I would support a food truck venue over at the parking lot at the old Kmart building. That'd be a great idea. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing. Okay. All right, thanks, Dan. I just have a couple of things. I'd like to close in memory of Rick Hart. He was a pharmacist in Wheatland forever, passed away suddenly, leaned, dropped his phone, reached down to pick it up and died. That was it. Sudden deal, very unexpectedly. Like a letter sent to him. And I'd also like my name added to Shirley Gabhart as well. Gabhart's been part of the Nicholas community forever. And I'd just like to emphasize how important it is to prevent heat stress and just make sure you do your work early in the morning when it's cool. Try to do a little bit of gardening, get outside, but try to get in before it gets hot. And remember that we keep hydrated, drink plenty of water. There's nothing to substitute for water. It's kind of Dan's philosophy on the beer. Alcoholic beverages are kind of a no-no as far as being hydrated as well as carbonated drinks. So try to stay away from the soda and the beer and more water and just try to make sure that you kept cool and, and hydrated well. And we're not over this yet. We're going to have it at least through Friday. So make sure you guys be careful and safe out there and also for county employees as well. And that would be all I have. We need a motion.
You to approve.
Second. Okay. By Carm. Rule call.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. We have one closed session item. We're going to closed session. Thank you. Oh, shoot.
I don't know when I was supposed to ask, but I'm here because I want to talk to somebody and follow up, but not necessarily for today. But I want to start the process of deciding whether or not we can.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Pick your time to attend the Marysville Peach Festival. It's happening Friday, July 19th and Saturday, July 20th in downtown Marysville. You'll find your old favorites like cobbler and pies, peaches and cream, fresh peaches locally grown and fruit to take home and eat. Fun for kids and big kids. A City of Marysville event. Keep moving by ecology, waste zero. Yuba County, say yes to Yuba. And by Sutter Health, exceptional care never stops. The 24th Marysville Peach Festival, happening Friday, July 19th and Saturday, July 20th in downtown Marysville. A City of Marysville event.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.